All right, it's 5:30. Get this study session started.
You're not missing out, are you?
Mr. Raines.
Wow, he came in strong there.
Comments, Mr. Mayor, to get things started this evening. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody for coming out at 5:30 tonight. This study session will be our regular one-hour study session. We'll be covering two topics related to the proposed parking code and access management standards. And so Paul will take a portion of that. I know that Dwayne and Amy will probably take another component of that. But we do, at 6:30, we'll have our community facility districts' agendas that we'll be going through for their budget approval. So this will go from 5:30 to 6:30. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tice.
Thank you. So as the mayor and council are aware, from time to time, staff brings forth some changes to the parking regulations for different land uses. We kind of become aware that there's an issue or a problem with our current code that needs to be upgraded. But with the adoption of our new general plan, which has a number of action steps related to revising our parking regs, I thought it was a good opportunity for us as a staff to really take a look at rewriting the parking regulations in their entirety. The parking regulations in the zoning code are actually, they're a separate chapter. It's Chapter 1756. So tonight, what I wanted to do was to brief City Council on the, kind of the, high-level briefing on the changes that this code amendment is proposing before we take it to the Planning Commission for a formal public hearing, and then, of course, then bring it back to council for consideration of adoption of the ordinance. So some of the objectives of this project were, one, is actually to try to limit the amount of paved parking that's provided for each land use to a level that's adequate, but not surplus. And the reason why we don't want to do, you know, pave more areas, create more parking areas than really are necessary is because paved parking can actually have several adverse environmental impacts, including increasing the urban heat island, increasing stormwater runoff, and of course, increasing development costs. So we don't want to do those things unnecessarily. We want to make sure we have adequate parking, but we don't want to really have, you know, excess parking if we can avoid it. We also wanted to encourage the provision of electrical vehicle charging stations. And although we did not require in this code the provision of electrical vehicle charging stations, we did encourage them, and we created some development standards that those who do provide can follow, including giving them credit for the number of parking stalls, you know, give them credit for the electric stalls meeting their parking requirement. We also created some design requirements for specific uses with drive-up lanes for both order boards and pickup windows. We want to make sure that, you know, with our new coffee kiosk in our fast-food restaurants and our quick-serve restaurants, that we had appropriate amount of queuing and stacking in the, for those uses so that we weren't creating conflicts and traffic jams within the parking lot itself and blocking drive aisles, and even to, you know, to avoid backing out, you know, backing the traffic even out into the travel lanes. You know, the worst-case example we have in this town, actually, there's two. One is the Little Caesar's on Treacle, which on some Friday nights backed the traffic out into that travel lane, and of course, Little Sombreros across the road that can block that drive-through, that travel lane as well. So we needed to make sure we had good queuing and stacking lane requirements. Additionally, I mentioned that the general plan did have, contain a number of action steps related to modifying our traffic, our parking codes, and I'm going to talk about those in a little bit more detail in just a second. We wanted to simplify the requirements, to make them easy to understand, and hopefully we've done that. We've introduced some additional graphics in there to help illustrate some things. And we wanted, lastly, to update the requirements to reflect, you know, the best-in-class, current, best development practices that are out there. So we looked at a lot of codes from other cities to make sure that what we were proposing here for Casa Grande really was the most current and best standards. The general plan does include, you know, I've put four action steps. There might be a few more, but these are really the most significant ones, I think. So the top one is that we might reduce or eliminate standard parking requirements in the downtown land use category to promote a higher level of pedestrian and multimodal transportation activity. And we're going to talk a little bit more about the downtown because there are some fairly significant changes in the downtown area. Another downtown one is to revise parking standards for the downtown core area to recognize the unique nature of the parking demand for downtown land uses and multimodal nature of downtown customers and residents, and which address the use of shared parking, on-street parking, transit, autonomous vehicles, drop-off, pickup, and park, public parking lots. The third action step is the city may reduce or eliminate standard parking requirements in our community corridor land use category to promote higher level of pedestrian and multimodal transportation activity. And lastly, to encourage new development in community corridor land use category to include facilities for electric vehicle charging, autonomous vehicle pickup, and drop-off locations. The proposed reg changes to the regulations, although probably don't fully implement each of these action steps, significantly addresses each of those. So here are some of the specific requirements. I didn't want to go through the code step, you know, line by line with you this evening, but, because I know I've provided it to you in your RCA. But no parking requirements were increased. Across the board, no increases. Parking requirements stayed the same for some uses and reduced for others. We did introduce this concept of maximum parking standard that limits the amount of paved parking to 200% of the code minimum. So we think that that probably will cover all scenarios where we can't, I can't really envision anyone really wanting to provide more than double than what we're requiring, but, and probably would be inappropriate to do so. Encourage developments with large parking lots for employees or customers to provide electrical vehicle charging stations. Create its specific locational criteria. Again, we did toy with the idea of actually making it mandatory to provide a certain number of electric vehicle charging stations for large parking lots. In the end, we settled with just encouraging it versus making it mandatory. But we certainly want to, you know, I think I really want to see how the businesses and the industrial developments in the community really react to that and if they do start providing them. Of course, even here at the city, we've provided three, and we have a number of businesses in the community that are already providing them. We made the process for approval of secondary drives and circular drives administrative versus requiring Planning Commission actions. Sometimes residential homes, they have a need for two driveways, sometimes to, for access RV gate, or sometimes to, for other reasons, to have circular drives. Today's code requires that we take those to Planning Commission. I really don't think they warrant a Planning Commission review, so we've just created some very specific standards that people can follow, and they can just get an administrative approval for those. We've provided more flexible parking requirements for properties in the downtown general plan land use category. So the first thing I'm going to tell you that today in our parking code, properties that are Zone B3, all of which are in the downtown area, do have some flexible parking requirements, but everything in the downtown general plan area is not Zone B3. So we broadened it out to really cover the whole downtown land use category. Eventually, almost all of those properties probably will be Zone B3, but they all have very similar characteristics in terms of their parking demand. So what we did is we provided provisions for allowing the parking requirements to be met either onsite, which is kind of typical throughout the city, but also on-street with, in adjacent roadways, and in public parking lots. There, you know, that's kind of tricky. I mean, everyone, all downtown businesses want to just put their parking on-street or in the public parking lots, but after a while, we kind of run out of on-street parking and public parking lot parking. We're not there yet, but eventually that will occur. So we, it's, you know, it's sort of a blended process of providing parking, some onsite, some on the street, some in the public parking lots. We were more flexible with commercial businesses to do this than residential, like new multifamily projects, and we're going to get some new multifamily projects downtown. Those really need to provide a higher level of their parking onsite, and because they have residents that need to park every day. We did generally exempt existing commercial buildings with less than 7,500 square feet of floor area from the off-street parking requirements, other than the need to have, like, one or two ADA accessible parking. So the very small, the small buildings, the freestanding buildings, they really don't generate that much parking demand. We were more flexible in not requiring them to provide onsite parking and allowing them to provide their parking on the adjacent streets. Lastly, we actually created a concept of a fee in lieu of providing parking, where if somebody was doing a development and they had to provide X amount of onsite parking, as an alternative to that, they could pay the city a certain fee per parking stall that the city could escrow to use for purchase of future parking lots, parking structures eventually possibly, but to create a fund that would allow the city to develop future public parking lots in the downtown area, and even parking structures when the property values get high enough to justify a parking structure. So that's kind of a nice 30,000-foot level of the types of changes we made. And so with that, I'll just open it up for any questions or discussion or input.
Donna, go ahead.
Sorry. Paul, you had mentioned the ADA requirement just briefly, and that was my only question. I didn't see that anywhere in here if, like, you talked about the downtown area, and that's the only area that I've really ever gotten complaints on, that there's not enough availability for, you know, for that. I'm sure we're probably in compliance, but how does that play into the picture?
That's a great question. First off, I'll say that our code does have ADA accessible parking requirements, and they all totally comply with normal ADA standards, right? So, for example, any business that was required to have between one and 25 spaces has to have one accessible. As I just mentioned, you know, a business could not, under this proposal, say, oh, I'm putting all my parking on the street and there's no ADA. So they would have to provide some ADA accessible. Downtown, we actually do have some ADA accessible designated parking that's parallel on the street, but everyone does have to provide ADA accessible parking, at least one under this code. And there's also a requirement for what we call an accessible route, which is a route so the person parking the car doesn't have barriers to get to the business entrance. So we are totally ADA compliant.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Matt?
A couple of things, Paul. A couple of things I liked is that there's no increase in requirements because it can sometimes be a little controversial, onerous for some business owners, especially when you're paying to pave stuff. And the electric vehicle being a suggestion, because I think that's going to be more of a market-driven type thing, when people want to make sense for someone to do it, whether their employees are requesting it, or the public's requesting it, or a private company says, I will install this here. So I'm glad that we're not requiring that, but I, but encouraging it, and that's the right way to do it. I don't know that this matters too much, but I was thinking with a lot of the newer, new way of shopping, there's a lot of pickup and drop-off, you know, stalls, which I'm trying to think, I guess that's just parking anyway, it's just designated parking. Does that have anything to do, or does that play into this? Are you, I'm sure you guys thought about that.
You know, we haven't specifically addressed it, but it probably would not be a bad idea for us to just have some language that says that pickup, you know, pickup stalls for picking up food or groceries or whatever can count towards your required parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we should.
Because I was thinking about it, and I mean, there are people that are going there anyway, so it's someone parking there just a very short period of time, but I would hope that they would be included in the, in the parking numbers.
Yeah? Mr. Powell.
Paul, the, years ago, I don't know if you were here, and Sarandos had a Mexican food restaurant right there on Third Street, and it burned down. But while it was in action, people would park three or four streets away and walk down with no, no problem with that, just because it was fun to go to and it had good food. If you start looking at the downtown, the behind, Third Street dead ends into that big parking lot. I don't know how many cars it'll hold, but it'll hold a lot of them. And behind the building for the veterans, they've got actually covered parking there that is available. I don't know if they'll ever use it, but there's quite a bit of parking in different places around town we just haven't really had anybody decide to use. But even down by the property across from the churches and whatever, a lot of them have good parking areas.
Totally, totally would agree, Councilman Powell, with that, in that, you know, in the downtown area, we are encouraging both, you know, people to be able to use on-street parking to meet some of their parking requirements, because we do think that, you know, you can walk a little bit in the downtown, it's appropriate, good pedestrian connectivity. And also, we're allowing for kind of joint use or common use of stalls, especially if we have two users that are, don't have, they have offsetting business times, right? So that works really well, too. So yes, we are looking at all those things in the downtown area.
Thank you, sir.
And just to piggyback on that, you mentioned something about them paying a fee for future public parking. So it seems like it would take a long time to build up that amount to actually, I know a structure is very costly, but like you said, some of the property downtown, if there's a way to do something sooner and maybe identify it a little clearer, you know, with signs that say, public parking, straight ahead, public parking left, public parking, you know, just so people know where, because parallel parking, I am not the best parallel parker. I try, but, and I don't have that car where you just push the button and it just goes back, but, but, so it's difficult for many people. So if we can just maximize some of that land, and especially if it's joint use and some of the buildings, just maybe put some signage before we get to the point where we, you know, raise enough money to pay for some of these public structures and that kind of thing.
So that's interesting, and you're exactly right. You know, there probably are three or four city-owned parking lots downtown, some of which are very obvious and people know, and some of which people may not really know.
Right.
So yeah, it's a good point.
Signage would be really helpful to go by.
That's a good idea. Bob?
Paul, do these, do these requirements apply to, like, the development of an apartment complex?
Yes.
Okay, and my question is, did you, did you consider making electric vehicle charging stations mandatory at apartment complexes, at least the development of new ones? I've often wondered how a tenant at an apartment complex, how they go about that. Do they pay to have their own installed, or?
So that's a great point. That's a great question. We did think about whether or not to make electric vehicle charging spaces a requirement, mandatory, or just a suggestion. In the end, we ended up with just, you know, suggesting it, not making it mandatory. You know, to Councilman Herman's point is it's almost market-driven. So for example, if I'm the owner of an electric vehicle and I'm looking to rent an apartment, I'm probably going to look for one that has electric vehicle charging versus one that doesn't, right? But we certainly, you know, legally can require them. I don't think there's any reason we couldn't if that's really the policy and the direction council wants to go, but for now, we did not make them mandatory.
So Paul, could it be part of your development process, meaning as you meet with these builders and the developer, when you have a checklist, right? The checklist has a EV check mark, right, that says, did you talk to the developer about electric vehicle charging stations?
Sure, we can do that. And even beyond that, you know, there's some, you know, some recent grant programs through the Department of Energy that's trying to encourage the creation of those. We can even make that stuff available to developers as an informational thing.
Right. Well, there's a lot of money available right now for that, actually. So that's a good, very good point, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to follow up that question real quick.
Go ahead.
The, is anybody in town charging at this point in time to recharge with electric vehicles?
Oh, yeah. They're all fee-based.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, they're all fee-based.
Probably ours you have to pay, right?
Ours is fee-based. The four we have over here are fee-based, so you have, they have an app.
You're around town.
There's an app, and you can actually pay through the app.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, I don't want to take too much time away from the access standards discussion, so.
Just go right into it, Paul.
I got some good input, but that's, I'm going to hand it off to Amy and Dwayne.
Okay. I don't know which one is bigger.
So once again, the Amy and Dwayne show. Done that a number of times. Last, we were here talking about transit, but tonight, we're talking about access control. And I think access control is really important, not only in moving traffic, but in safety, more so in safety. I was looking at the fatalities and serious injury crashes on Florence Boulevard, which we all know has horrible access control, and quite a few of them might have been prevented with good access control. People making a left turn when they shouldn't be able to, and so on. So we're here tonight to talk about our proposed changes into our access control policy. With that, I'll turn it over to Amy.
Thank you, Dwayne. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's good to see you all again. As usual, Dwayne stole a little bit of my thunder on my introductory slides, so I'll breeze through these a bit. Really, a couple of things. I think it's been since about 2007 was the last time that the city really took a hard look at their access management standards. And so I know I've been working with staff for a couple of years, actually, to work through this process. We were here a few years ago, so some of you may remember, and I'm going to do a little bit of a refresher today. But really, the goal of access management is to have a deliberate method for requiring new developments to place their driveways at an optimal location. And when you think about access management, you're going to have different types of standards that would apply to different types of streets. You know, when you think about a freeway, you think about interchanges, right? That's what we would call, like, full access control. You can't just go on wherever you want. The goal, really, is to minimize the number of access points for those types of streets or facilities where you're trying to maximize the throughput of traffic. And the reason for that is twofold. As Dwayne mentioned, every time you introduce an access point, you are, in effect, introducing a conflict point. And so when you think about that, conflict points result in two things. One, it can result in an increase in the number of crashes, which of course, then, as you have an incident on your street, the number of cars that you can get through will start to go down. The second reason is that as you increase the number of access points in your corridor, you've got vehicles that are turning into those driveways, turning out of those driveways. They may not be causing a crash, but they could be requiring somebody that's traveling in that travel lane to slow down in order to allow them to enter that traffic. And so those two factors really decrease the capacity of the roadway. In other words, the number of cars that can just travel through that corridor. There's a lot of different ways you can control access management. Really, the most common in an urban setting are the idea of a raised median. And I know you've got a lot of those as part of your standards for your new street cross-sections. And so I'm having that raised median and being very deliberate about where you're going to allow an opening in that meeting, meet the median for full access. One of the other things that's fairly important is looking at your corner clearances. And essentially, that, what that means is, when you have a major intersection, the intersection of two arterial roadways, you need to be deliberate about where you're going to place driveways in proximity to those intersections. Should you be allowing vehicles to enter or exit the roadway in immediate proximity to that particular intersection? One of the other things that is really consideration a lot of times for infill development is the idea of joint driveway or cross-access agreements, where you may have a parcel that could be a smaller parcel adjacent to a larger parcels, and you need to work with those landowners to make sure that you're doing the best you can to allow them to consolidate their access points. And so I've shown this to some of you before in the past, but this is just a little bit of a simulation that we have. On the top, it is providing a demonstration of what something might look like if you were to manage your access versus on the bottom, if you were to not manage the access. This is an identical corridor. This is the, we took a corridor and we said, as you can see on the bottom, there's a lot of driveways. We said, well, what if we take some of those out, redirect people to other access points? What effect does that have? And so you can see pretty clearly and pretty dramatically that when you start to pull out all of those access points and redirect those people to a consolidated access point or to have access off of a side road, it certainly minimizes the amount of friction. It allows the traffic that's traveling through that street to flow more freely. And so, I'm going to cut this a little short because I think you're getting the point. In this particular scenario, again, we're talking about saying there's the same number of vehicles that want to travel through this corridor. We found that without access management, we could get about 5,300 vehicles through. If we start to manage that access, that number goes from 5,300 vehicles to 8,900 vehicles during the same. eighty-nine hundred vehicles during the same time period. And travel time is cut from nine minutes to get through that corridor to six minutes. So it's a pretty dramatic increase, and I think, and Duane, you can kick me if I'm wrong, but I do think that the council has voiced, um, desire to sort of maximize throughput for some of your arterial corridors in the city. And so I think that these strategies are going to go a long way in, in helping you achieve that objective. So again, as I mentioned, um, the big things you need to think about, what is the role of that street, or sometimes we call it facility type? Is it really designed to carry through traffic? That often is the case. You have a lot of major arterials, usually those are on the mile grid system, versus some of those maybe half-mile, quarter-mile streets that are intended to provide a little bit better access. Um, we also need to talk about the spacing between, between driveways again, right? What is appropriate? It may be more appropriate to have closer spacing on some of those, uh, lower-level, quarter-mile, half-mile streets versus those mile grid streets. And then again, that distance from intersection corridors. So first, we're going to focus on the minimum driveway spacing. And we've got two types of access we can provide. One is right-in, right-out, which basically says you can place a driveway there, and the only movements that are going to be available are to make a right turn into that driveway and to make a right turn out of the driveway. It's still providing a level of access. It's minimizing the number of conflict points. Then we have full access spacing, which basically says you can travel, you know, across the street. If there's a driveway on the other side, you can make your right turns, you can make your left turns, full access. What we're trying to do is on those arterial streets, um, those mile grids, we're going to make a recommendation that those full access driveways be limited to one quarter mile. So if you've got one, it's got to be a quarter mile away from any other full access driveway. Now, in combination with those full access driveways, you can have right-in, right-out spacing at six-hundred-and-sixty feet on principal arterials, which is about an eighth of a mile. Minor arterials, a little bit more lenient, four-hundred-and-fifty feet. Again, minor arterials are intended to carry a slightly lower volume of traffic than major arterials. So it's okay to have a few more conflict points, a few more driveways, recognizing that you're going to bring down your throughput a little bit. And then going into collector streets, again, much less stringent at a hundred-and-fifty feet for either right-in, right-out, or full access. So how does that compare? And so here's a couple examples. McCartney Road and Pert Road, as an example, they're principal arterials. The old access guidelines said you could have a driveway every two-hundred to two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet. That's that change now that we're saying, "No, really? To maximize your throughput, you need to have a minimum of a quarter mile spacing." So instead of two-hundred and two, two-hundred to two-seventy-five, we're talking a quarter mile now, or thirteen-twenty, one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty feet. You can have six-hundred-and-sixty foot spacing for right-in, right-out. So you'll see, generally speaking, it's become a lot more restrictive, um, in an effort to minimize those conflicts. Um, in fact, in the past, the collector roadway, there were not even any defined spacing requirements. So you could put a driveway in as long as Public Works was, was agreeing to it. Now, we're saying we'd like to have three-hundred feet between those, but at bare minimum, a hundred-and-fifty feet. Again, looking at the corner clearances, for those, uh, major arterials, we are saying quarter mile. Um, before, those were in the neighborhood of a few hundred feet. Now, we're saying, uh, we're going to try to hold that to a quarter mile on either side of the intersection. Um, you could have right-in, right-outs, though, at four-hundred forty to six-hundred-and-sixty feet, depending on which side of the intersection you're in. Again, collector requirements are much more lenient. So what does that mean? Just a couple examples here, um, of locations where there actually are driveways already in place today. And these are examples of, of driveway locations where, uh, those locations were allowed in the two-thousand-seven or the old access management standards, they would not be allowed today. So let's take a look at a couple vacant parcels. This is the intersection of Treckel and Quartzon, southeast corner. Um, there's actually three parcels here. So we've got the corner parcel, and then the other parcel that's just a little bit further south on Treckel, boxed out in red. Um, neither of those parcels would be allowed to have any type of access based on the current standards. So joint access would be required for those, and there would have to be agreements, uh, made with that larger parcel. Uh, the other interesting thing is that this parcel does not meet the one-quarter mile minimum requirement for full access. So in effect, the current standards would only allow right-in, right-out at these locations. So of course, we recognize, right, this is an ideal scenario. This is what we're going to try to be recommending and, and talking to developers and requiring of developers, but it may not be a one-size-fits-all. And so there is, um, language that allows, uh, the Public Works or designated, um, staff member to make exceptions to these requirements, um, usually in conjunction with a traffic impact study, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So here's a couple examples of, of those types of exceptions that could potentially be made. This one allows the, that particular parcel to have three driveways. Two of them on Treckel would remain right-in, right-out, but making that exception for a full access onto Quartzon at the far east side of the property. Another option would be to provide a full access driveway on Treckel. Um, again, we would recommend the spacing. It, we can achieve the quarter mile, but ideally, six-hundred-and-sixty feet or an eighth of a mile would be preferred, and, uh, then having the right-in, right-out. So this is really just, we're demonstrating that there is some flexibility, that there are some options, and we recognize that there are some parcels where we're not going to be able to meet these, these requirements. Um, here's another example on McCartney between Tucker and Palomino. Um, there is an existing full access to Circle K there already, and so the requirements would be that there could only be a right-in, right-out access additionally on McCartney. Um, Palomino, the parcel would not be able to have access because it is required, is classified as a minor arterial. If it were to be reclassified to a collector, um, then there would be a driveway that could be permitted at a hundred-and-seventy-five feet. So those are other things that you need to think about, right? You may have some classifications in place for some of your current roadways, and you need to take a hard look and say, "What type of, or volume of traffic is, is it really servicing?" And is, does it make sense, um, to look at reclassification? And I know, I, I think that, um, I know Duane has asked me a couple of times in the past month about certain roadways, and would it be possible to reclassify those roadways from a principal arterial to a minor or something that would maybe, uh, allow for slightly more lenient, um, access?
Amy, it also depends on the use, the land use that's there. For example, that Quartzon and Treckel, in my mind, there's an apartment complex going on that corner, and then a medical building on the south end of that building, and they may or may not be able to share in and out, meaning you couldn't share the north side with the south side because it's an apartment complex and it's, it may be gated, right? So it's secure for the apartment people.
That would definitely be the case, and I think those are things that are going to have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. I do think, um, in these particular types of circumstances, though, if, as an example, the, a proposal comes in for the, that larger parcel, um, I think that my recommendation would be that you do, that you make your best effort to allow for some sort of cross-access agreement for those smaller parcels.
And I think, I think these rules are important, uh, but they should be guidelines. They shouldn't be a rule. That's, that's the way I'd like to see it anyway. I mean, in other words, there should be some, some leniency given based on the, on what the land use is going to happen.
Yeah.
You know, what's going to happen to the land. I, I, and I get it, I understand, because I like the fact you can put a lot more people on a road, especially Pennal and Florence and those types of roads, where you can get people moving across those major, those major arteries. But I also think we need to be cognizant of the business as well.
Mayor, if it might be helpful also, just so you know, is, in this particular example, what we, uh, did negotiate with the developer of the apartment complex and the medical is exactly this scenario, a shared access.
So they're going to share it?
With, uh, where they came in and the traffic split off to go north to the apartments and south to the, uh, to the, um...
Yeah, it was another question I had, is how do we encourage people to do that? And how do you encourage people to, to do this shared and joint drive access, you know? So I, I...
In this case, we kind of had the same person owning all of it, and they can negotiate, but, uh, it actually worked out quite well.
Okay.
As you know.
Good, that's good. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will reiterate, um, that while these are shown as standards, there is language that allows for deviation from these standards based on conversations. I think it's just a starting point to try to encourage people to think about their site design and, and see if it's even possible for them to adhere to these standards. Um, I think we had...
But how do we get existing businesses to share?
That's not going to happen.
Well, like, you got Walgreens at Quartzon and Pennal, and you got Evers next door. Why didn't they share? Because that exit coming out, people go left out of that Walgreens parking lot? It's very dangerous.
They were supposed to share, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
Uh, that, the agreement, the agreement, uh, at the time of, uh, planning and city approval required them. Uh, Walgreens, um, would not cooperate in that case.
Hmm. Okay. Thanks, Paul.
And then, uh, here we have just one more example. This is on Florence Boulevard between Henness and, and Cacheris. And again, this one actually allows for some pretty decent access to right-in, rights-out, right-out on Florence as well as a full access, uh, right-in, right-out on Henness. And then what we would contemplate would be at that property line and other full access driveway. Um, so, as I mentioned, um, there is a process. These developments need to go through. They need to submit a, a traffic impact study. And, um, those studies in and of themselves will look at the roadway conditions, they'll look at the traffic volumes, um, they'll look at level of service, and they'll look at safety. And all of these things would be a consideration, um, as they go through that approval process and, and approval for their site driveway locations. Um, the guidelines are customized for Casa Grande. Uh, one of the significant changes, the previous, uh, requirements for the traffic impact study said you had to do a traffic impact study if your development generated a hundred, uh, trips per day. Now, we're increasing that to a hundred trips per hour, um, so that not every small, sort of mom and pop has to go through this lengthy process. Um, and we do define a variation in what the area that, uh, that they need to look at. So just how far out from their development do they need to go, based on the size of the development and the number of trips that, um, they would be expected to generate. Um, so we...
Do you have doubts required?
Yes.
Oh, I just was going to add the, uh, two or three things. The streets that are south of the tracks come in at an angle, and that's one of the things that's messed up a lot of the mid-block, uh, where you try to go right or left on Florence Boulevard. Uh, the other thing I've noticed is, uh, the trifectas. We have three trifectas. One on, one on, uh, Florence, one on Treckel, and one on Pennell. And you can see these little cars, if they have two exhaust pipes, they got to show you they do. And there's a lot of back and forth and people cutting off other people and that type of thing, uh, on, on those three streets, because they're used, and I know we're getting pushback right now from our, our people that live here because there's so much traffic. And, uh, you know, when you, when you grow as a community and people live here, you feel a little better about that. I think, you know, that's necessary. But, uh, it is, it is something that people are upset about. Now, you can't get across town in five minutes anymore.
I completely understand the frustration, and I will say, one of the goals of access management is to help, I guess, relieve that perception of the amount of traffic. I think sometimes it's not so much the amount of traffic as the congestion that's caused by that traffic and the delays that are caused by that. So with good access management, as I mentioned and demonstrated, you can actually get more vehicles through at greater travel speeds, more reasonable travel speeds, and, and reduce that delay, and, and it kind of brings down that, that driver frustration quite a bit.
Go ahead, Amy. Go ahead and finish, sorry.
You're fine. Um, I will mention, one of the new things also, um, on the traffic impact analysis, uh, guidelines is we've introduced now, uh, a traffic impact analysis checklist, which, uh, is a form that developers or representatives of the developers can fill out. The same questions are asked of any development. Um, it lays the foundation for the basis of conversation, um, between the developer, developers' representatives, and, uh, staff. And, um, I think it, it better, um, frames the expectations and the necessary topics of conversation going into that. So I think it, it makes staff's job a little bit easier, but it also, you know, coming from a perspective as a private consultant and having done some of these for private developers, um, it's always nice to have an idea of what the expectations of the, of the city are going to be as they review those applications. So I think this is going to help, uh, both sides of the fence. So with that, I will open it up to any additional questions.
Please, sir.
Not so much a question, but just a comment, and I'm going to kind of echo what Council Member Powell just said. I think this is, um, perfect timing. You know, it seems as though we, that's, that's an issue, is, is the traffic. Um, with, with the growth that's going on, um, it's something that people are constantly complaining about. And so I think this is great for us to have these standards, and I agree, there should be flexibility, but I really like that there's standards, you know? So let's really try to, you know, stick with them, but of course you want flexibility. But, um, but I think it's great timing. Same with the traffic, um, impact studies. You know, of course, we tell people that, you know, there's going to be a study, but it, you know, it's nice, and I really hope we promote to the community that we are doing the access management and the traffic impact, um, checklist, so they know that we are proactive. Um, you know, there's so much development going on our key arterial roads, and so this is going to be critical. So I, you know, perfect timing. I appreciate, um, all of you taking the time to do this, and I'm just really happy that, that this is something that we're focusing on.
Good.
So thank you.
And I'll also echo that as well. But, uh, step further, uh, since we're working on the Florence Boulevard streetscape, it's a really good time if we're going to be looking at medians and stuff.
Yep.
And the other part about that is a lot of people are against it, but your demonstration really helps to say, "Here's the problem we have."
Why, why, it's good, yeah.
What we hear, that you can't get across town fast enough. This will help you to get across town faster, get to your destination faster and safer. Um, so the education part, like a lot of stuff we do, is going to be very important as well. So I know you'll be working with Paul, obviously Paul's department too, but with the streetscape project that we're working on, on Florence Boulevard.
Well, and if I, if I may mention, um, a lot of times you'll see pushback from development, right, or developers about, "I don't want just right-in, right-out access," or, "What do you mean? You're going to take away my driveway?" And I think if you can relay the message that this idea of access management is going to make it easier for people to travel the corridor, sometimes you get to the point where there's so much congestion that people just avoid it altogether, right? And so if you can create a space where people want to, where people, you know, are not frustrated to drive, it's actually better for the businesses that are along the...
Like, not going on Florence Boulevard in the wintertime?
Yeah. And one that comes to mind is Lowe's, right? Because they have the median, they have the left-in.
Yeah.
You know, but there's only the one entrance, and that serves, uh, EG's Restaurant, the bank, um, Lowe's, Home Improvement, and then...
And then the back exit, too.
Yeah, and then they have the back, so, I mean...
Two exits.
But on Florence Boulevard with the median.
Yeah.
It works.
Yeah, it works good.
Now, I, I have a comment, because when I was reading this, I, I really in my mind could pick out four places in our city that, in the last ten years, that we've, we've had come in that are major issues, that, you know, that people complain about. The one that I get the most is the one at Pert, um, Pert and Florence. And, you know, when you talk about existing businesses working together, and, you know, no discredit to the, the charter school that's there, but that's the one that I get the complaints about the most, because I live on that side of town, too. And I have sat there and watched where there'll be twenty-five cars backed up from that school onto Florence Boulevard, and you can't get into Walgreens, you can't get into Home Depot, you can't, you know? So I, I don't know how we fix what's already broken, but I think that that's something that we really need to be serious about, because it's a safety issue. And our city staff has done a number of things when they get complaints about that one intersection. But, um, somebody, you know, I mean, it's a safety issue at this point.
It's a slow light there, which piles up the cars behind it to make that turn. And, and I know, huh, the, uh, the company is really nice about not letting, or about letting parents come in, pick up their kids, uh, after school. Uh, there on Quartzon and, um, Pennell, or not Pennell, and Florence, but, um...
It's on Pier. Aren't they on Pier?
Yeah.
Yeah. School's on Pier. Right next to Home Depot.
Yeah, it is.
And you talked about the developers pushing back, but I hope, you know, when they do the traffic impact study, they see, I mean, there are so many times, there are some intersections, I just, I automatically, I just go right in, or, you know, because I'm just too scared to go across the road. So there's many times people will naturally do that because they're worried about having that full access, but I would hope that they understand why. And I know when there is a right-in, right-out, is that what you say? Right-in?
Right-in, right-out.
Right-out, right. You have to worry about U-turns, and, you know, people go right, and then they do a U-turn, and, you know? So I'm sure there's danger with all of that, but I would imagine there's signage that you say, "No U-turn," or whatever, right? If you do those types of access points, but anyway.
Unless you put in medians, you really can't control. You can't control what the public does because they'll go wherever they want to go.
No one's looking.
All right. Any other questions or comments for...
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Duane. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you. Good work. Okay. We're set for 6:30. We're going to adjourn till 6:30? All right. We'll adjourn the study session, and we'll read adjourn at 6:30 for our...